I'd like to call back to order a meeting for the North End of a school committee September 24th, and we'll start with a rise and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Just a reminder, we are being recorded, and please do silence your mobile devices. So what I propose with the committee's approval is that we hit public comment first and then take old business 9A first to address the needs of our audience. Is that reasonable?
Absolutely.
So first, I'd like to call any public comment on this evening's agenda or any school matter. Hearing none. I'd like to move to old business item 9A. This is our vote and deliberation on the naming request for the North End of a school track. As we start this, you'll notice that one of our committee members is absent this evening, and unfortunately Ms. Warren was not able to join us. She has a statement which is in a packet that I'd like to read aloud. "September 23rd, Dear Chairman Gross, Committee Members, Dr. Price, and also attending tonight's meeting, when the school committee's meeting schedule for the year was first discussed, I had requested a date change, but unfortunately the committee could not find another date that worked. I am with you in spirit and wish you wonderful meeting. Though I am unable to vote on tonight's agenda items, I do want to state that I am in favor of the proposal presented to rename the North Andover High School track in honor of Alexander P. Freese. Thank you to the school committee for providing the opportunity for the public to engage in this process, and thank you to all town citizens and North Andover Public School community who participated in this process by sharing your thoughts and support. It is clear that Alex Freese's legacy has had and will continue to have a positive impact on the students and members of this community. Best, Azor Warren." So, two things. One, apologies that she couldn't make it, and unfortunately the schedules don't accommodate everybody. We all have been impacted by that. And two, just for the record, I want Ms. Warren's opinion to be heard. So with that, just a quick reminder, we are operating under our policy of naming, which is FFR. We've had appropriate petitions filed, we've had two public hearings, and this is the time for the school committee to deliberate on what we've heard, what we received as public input, and ultimately to vote on the proceeding or to vote on the proposal. So with that, I'd take a motion to -- whoops, let me get to the right page here. I would entertain -- so we can have the discussion, I'd entertain a motion that the committee, in accordance with policy FFR, discuss the input from, heard from the public at the last two meetings with regards to the name of the North Andover School Track and vote on the naming proposal.
I will move that we move to name the track in honor of Alex P. Freese.
Second?
Second.
Great, so we have a motion. Do we have open discussion now? Do you want to start?
I will echo Mrs. Warren's statement in that the number of people from the community have just been outpouring, and other times we've gotten emails from people and they've been cut and paste. And if you could read all of the emails, they are so passionate and they are so emotional about who Alex was and the impact that he had, and it just is the right thing to do, and I will be so proud to vote for this tonight.
First of all, thank you to Mr. McDevitt for driving this issue for the last year. I really appreciate your efforts to change the policy to start with, and also driving the whole naming of the track after Alex. And I also want, I know Steve Nugent's in the crowd tonight, but Steve's been, and his emails and his letters and everything else have been very, forget helpful, but inspiring to all of us. I think those of us who didn't know Alex but heard about him, and those of us who were serving as town officials when he tragically passed away many years ago, remember how impactful it was on the community. And I think, as Mr. McDevitt mentioned, the emails over the last several months have been inspiring and reflective, and I was privileged to be able to read them. So I will obviously be casting my vote in favor tonight, and I'm just happy that we're finally at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Freese.
Mr. Lifford?
I just wanted to thank all the participants, Mr. Nugent, and everyone who's participated in this process by giving us the time to refine our policy, get organized here, and really work with us to work through this in a very methodical way so that we all felt comfortable and good about this. I think, now that we've come to the end of the process, I think we all feel good about doing this, and I think this is, was, in the end, exactly the right thing to do. I think Alex was exactly the right person to name this track after, and I certainly fully support this initiative, but I wanted to thank you for the respect you've shown us and given us the time to get organized here and do this in a way that felt right to us. And so now, going forward, we can do this again if we need to. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Lifford. And from what has been said, as echoed, Mr. Nugent, thank you for bringing this forward, and again, Mr. McDevitt, for creating the environment where we could have this thoughtful and important decision before us. The emails, and as Andrew said, the emails were not, you know, copy paste, copy paste. These were heartfelt, these were indicative of how positive of an influence Alex was in the district and continues to be. So it's my pleasure to call for the vote. All in favor of naming the high school track in honor of Alex Freese? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're going to work out the details, Steve, right?
Steve, obviously.
He's on it.
You're on it, right?
He's on it. It's Steve Nugent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve Nugent.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your deliberation, your consideration of Alex, and I'm delighted that he's able to shed positive influence on young people today. He's certainly still a big influence in our lives. It's an honor to have your name affixed to something like that. I thank you in behalf of Alex.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day, everyone.
Great.
So, let's see, and thank you for indulging the order change. I'd like to get back onto the main agenda and turn to our student reports. Good evening.
Good evening. All right, so finally back into the full swing of school. Every day starting to a rhythm, starting to move by a little bit faster, not crawling Seniors, we're really starting to be stressing over the whole college and career planning. That's been really enforced by all the guidance counselors on what we should be doing, and it's just been great having all these programs there for us, helping us out with all those tough decisions that we have to make, like applying, where to apply, what to do. And yeah, it's about it, just finally getting back into the swing of things.
And how's your team doing?
We're 2-0. Big game tomorrow night against April.
Senior year is when deadlines really matter, so.
Oh, absolutely. It's hard keeping track of all of them, and on top of them, make sure you don't miss them.
Good. Well, enjoy the year, because it does go fast.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. School starts rolling faster and faster, like everyone is on their right tracks. Everyone pretty much knows their classes by now. And my sister's a freshman, and like she told me her inputs about school, and she loves the school so far. She joined, she wants to join like all the clubs ever, and my, my club, the Asian Student Association, just started this Tuesday, and it's rolling by, and it's really fun. Thank you.
Anything else that's going well?
Everything's going well. No issues.
Great, lovely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Again, welcome to stay if you choose. If not.
If you get it.
We understand, yeah.
Do your FASA.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to our consent agenda, looks like we have one item, which is approval of minutes from September 10th, which we find in the packet. So I'd like to accept the motion to accept the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 4-0, no abstentions. Moving on to our chair's report, that would be me. I read the statement from Ms. Warren. I just have two quick items. One, I was overseas last week on behalf of business, and I was attending an innovation meeting of the company, the, you know, the around-the-world company innovation leaders got together. And one of the things that I reflected on is the importance of obviously science and technology, but as I sometimes meet with my colleagues for the first time from around the world, that we've been working on web sessions and telephone, that, you know, our abilities to work collaboratively across societies and across cultures is absolutely important, and that just further reinforces the, you know, the background and the diversity that we have in school, and how important that is for not only being able to be sensitive to those cultural differences, but also to be able to work creatively and constructively with different groups. So that resonated with me, and I reflect back on that within our body. The other two items I want to mention, one is that I don't know if people are aware that our superintendent and assistant superintendent are Twitters, or Tweeters? Tweeters, I guess is the right.
Or just twits.
Well, I'm not sure about that. I really urge people to sign up and follow. Dr. Price is at NASUPT, and Mr. Gilligan is at NA underscore public. It is really the most timely and most useful in my mind, up-to-date information that we can get. I know there are several hundred, up to 400 followers at this point. You can get on the website, you can get in the newsletters, you can watch it on TV, but ultimately, I really recommend that people do sign up and follow, because the useful information there is right up to date and is very, very useful. So with that.
And sometimes humorous.
And occasionally humorous, yes. So if you haven't checked it out, it's not a big nuisance. I do recommend you get on and follow, again, NASUPT or NA underscore public. It is a great source of timely information. That's what I have tonight. With that, shall we move on to the superintendent's report?
Sure. I have three items, the first I'm going to do, which is I just wanted to share with you, we had our leadership team meeting this Tuesday, Monday, Monday days, and I just wanted to share, we, I talked about this last time when I talked about my goals, but this is our leadership team, team goal around, it's our professional practice goal. So under state, under the state evaluation system, we have a school, a student learning goal, we have a professional practice goal, and then each principal has a school improvement goal. And we've agreed as a leadership team to have a common professional practice goal around evaluation. And I had talked about that last time, and I thought it would just be good to show you what we're planning to do. So our team goal would be to spend our leadership time during the 2015-16 school year collaborating around aspects of evaluation practice with a goal of calibrating the entire process with one another, which I think is very timely and important. And you can see, we're going to do eight non-evaluative walk-through protocols in each of our schools, and then each month we have a focus that mirrors the evaluation process. So I thought I would share that with you as just kind of an example of how we're trying to calibrate and kind of work together to hone our skills around supervising and evaluating teachers. And there you go.
Okay.
All right. So now, Mr. Gilligan, you're going to talk a little bit about NIWA.
Sure.
And I'm going to pass out a handout that he has on that.
Thank you.
He can project that.
One page. One page, Mr. Gilligan.
Back-to-back, Brian.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Well, I just hadn't mentioned last time, you know, we typically come and talk about our common assessment calendar with the school committee each year, and we're really excited this year because we've eliminated some of the testing that we've done in previous years and brought something in that we're trying out, the sharing grades three to five, called MAP testing, and it stands for Measures of Academic Progress. So typically, in the course of the year, around reading comprehension, we've done what was called grade testing. And grade testing, it was, it was a good test, and that's when we have talked before about the STANIs and the comparability, the MCAS, it helps us with prediction, but the grade testing was very cumbersome in terms of bubbling in information, getting the sticker right so the scanner can code it, ripping off the ends, getting stuck in the machine, and it was a lot of man-hours for the turnaround. And any testing that we do has to be helpful to teachers. It has to drive their instruction. And this year, we were able to bring in NWEA in this MAP testing and mathematics and ELA, and we're working it in grades three through five. So that's replaced our common math assessment, which had to be scored by hand and put into a data, into a spreadsheet, and then processed by Alicia, our data person, and sent back to teachers. This is pretty exciting, because we'll be doing it three times a year to inform instruction with valid, reliable, and immediate data. Tracks their growth from term to term and from year to year, and as soon as they take the test, which will be three hours in math, three one-hour sessions in math this year, and three one-hour sessions in ELA, 45 minutes to an hour on average, and the results are instantaneous. So we have them right away. Teachers have that information in their hands. So the goal this year, year one, is to organize logistics. I have to tell you that Mike Grant, his tech team, and our curriculum coordinators have been phenomenal, because they've been administering with the classroom teachers this test using the new Chromebooks. So they're not going to a lab, they have the Chromebooks right there. I went up the other day to double-check on this, because I wanted to make sure that it was really going as well as I was hearing from the teachers. I went into a classroom, the students powered up the book, and our tech department had it, right there it said MAP testing. It was all set for each grade level, for the grades three through five for the kids. So it's to assess students, it's to inform instruction, so it's for our teachers to have that information right away. And we're not reporting out this year, this isn't something that we'll be reporting out to parents, because we're really testing it this year to get the right information. Then next year, we'd be looking at goal-setting with the students around what they get, what's called a RIT score, and would be setting goals with them, so that we can not only inform our instruction, but set goals with the students as well. So we're pretty excited about that. The tests are in math and reading performance, the computer-based adaptive assessment, it determines an instructional level, and it's immediate, detailed, and accurate information for teachers around domain and standard. And this year, so we've done quite a bit of district training. We opened up on 9-3, and we did some training with our staff around ways to use MAP data in the classroom and to prepare students to take the MAP assessment. And next week, probably the most important session we'll be doing, is we'll be working with teachers three to five, and some are from NWA coming on-site, to help our teachers learn how to access, interpret, and apply MAP data in reports to inform their instruction. So there's a lot of different things that the software can do for us, but we're trying to find the most useful reports for teachers to drive their instruction right away. So we're pretty excited about that. Also, just a literacy resource update, we will have the literacy team come in to do a presentation later in the year, but as was mentioned by Mike last week, I just wanted to echo the professional development that's been taking place over the course of the summer last spring with our reading coaches and with the curriculum coordinator, Lorraine Marks. Mr. Millie, if you could just get me on your Google email, just one more highlight here.
This is really exciting.
Could be.
I've got a question while he's doing that. This isn't replacing DIBELS at all in those tests. This is still in conjunction with that.
Yeah, we can do, NIWA can actually be done in grades one and two. Typically, two, you see it in a lot of schools, it's in thousands of schools across the nation. It's a nonprofit out of, I think they're out of Oregon or Washington, they've been around for 45 years, but we're keeping DIBELS. The DIBELS is a really good, just a quick screen for us that raises the flag that says we've got to peel the onion deeper on the student, or particular students in the intensive, etc. So no, we haven't done any change with that.
All right, great.
Okay, so now we're on the live site, so everyone in North Andover, every teacher on their Google account, if you see where I'm highlighting here with my mouse, they can go to that, and that has, oh boy, it has the elementary teaching and learning stuff, it has our Chrome webs, you know, all the different cool stuff that we have. But when we get down to the literacy resource, so what our reading coaches have done in conjunction with the curriculum coordinators is helpful websites for teachers and for students. And this is, it's a link that's for our staff to use as resources. So if we went to teachers, and we took a look, they have curriculum resources, they have, you know, different website resources, searchable databases, small group resources. My favorite is Intervention, you know, so they have different interventions, you know, that become available to teachers. So all the good stuff that we've been sharing, you know, how we've been talking for years about best practice and sharing best practice, now we have a site that we can put them, that Mr. Grant has helped set up with the, with the reading coaches to put live, which has been really, really, where we've wanted to go, and now we're in a place to do it, you know, lasting. So assessments, you know, some of these are links to various assessments that we're using, but also we're tutorials for teachers around best practices and running records, benchmark, alternative running records. So it's been really cool, and I have to give a huge shout-out. Today, I was at Sargent for the 20th anniversary of the Sargent School, and they were doing shout-outs. I guess Sargent has a shout-out, so, but a shout-out to Jaclyn Taylor and Ann Joyce, Lorraine Marks, and Kara, and Mike Grant and his staff for being able to get us to have a spot, not only with Google Docs to share best practice and assessments and all those different things, but to have a literacy website that's going to be huge help to teachers.
I assume you're going to have one of these, like for math, too, right? A math resources website?
Sure. Yeah, that's something that will be in the works. We've been sharing, we did a lot of work in mathematics, as you know, about a year ago, for an entire year, and a lot of that stuff was binders and papers, but we have the ability now to have grade-level Google Docs, and, excuse me, not Google Docs, not only Google Docs, but Google Plus, so that we have a Google Plus environment for our teachers, that this is just on top of Google Plus. So teachers have grade-level sharing ability across Google Plus, which is really cool.
The page that we looked at, the literacy resources page, can teachers also update that, too? Can teachers add information to that?
Yeah, they can add to their, they can get their information to the, we don't want to just bog this down with, because that's what we have that Google Plus site for, so they can share resources on the Google Plus page across that's, that's, teachers have, like, grade one, grade two, grade three, and then the best practices we can put here.
Do we pay for MAP?
Do we pay for MAP?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
How much is it?
It's, it's about 11, it's about 11, a little over $11 per student, and we don't pay for it out of the central office, it comes out of the operating budget. And we're paying for the paper tests for just grade, for the reading comprehension, we're paying about $5.50 per test, and we still continue to use our Reading Street baseline at end of the year, but we've decided to go with copies of that, with the Blackline Masters, which is free, other than just some paper and toner, because teachers find that valuable, but that was very expensive when we were ordering that. So between not paying formally for the Reading Street baseline at end of year and eliminating the grade testing, we were able to pay for the, in a cost-neutral basis, get the MAP.
Good. Sounds great.
So a couple of quick questions. There's a section in there for students, can they access that from home, or do they have to own?
That is for teachers, so when you go to students on the site, that is for teachers, and links that they can give students and put on their blogs and put on their website and share with students.
Because there was one that said teachers and then students, but it's got to be filtered in terms of what's appropriate?
Yeah, that's a site, yeah, so that's a site for teachers, and they'll say, okay, if I'm working on this, so my son's in second grade at Thompson, and he has Miss McNeil. So Miss McNeil says, you know, last year he had Miss Rudelsky, and he was doing math practice with Ten Marks Math, so he'd be home every night practicing his Ten Marks, which is an Amazon-based free app. And the same thing here, there's, that's helpful links for the teachers to be able to give parents on students.
To give to the parents, okay. Great.
One question I have is, is there a way to find out how much, how much traffic we're getting on the curriculum sites, know who's using them, who's not, to use it as an opportunity to find out, is there someone that might be able to champion for others who aren't using the resource?
So when you say the sites for?
Internally.
Internally, yeah, so the internal literature.
See which teachers or which administrators.
You have to figure that out.
That would be a Mike Grant question, not Mr. Gilligan question, I couldn't honestly give you a good answer for that one tonight, but we can ask.
Yeah, it might be, it might be valuable, because it looks like we've got an excellent resource that if we can, you know, figure out how to get people using it if they're not, that might be.
What I can tell you is from new teachers to intermediate teachers in terms of years, and to veteran teachers who are excellent teachers in this district, the emails that Dr. Price and I have been receiving, the, from the training on running records and the PD that the coaches have been providing, I mean, when you get an email from a 30-year veteran saying, this is some of the best training I've had, when you get emails from reading teachers who say, I'm a reading teacher in Title I, or I'm a reading interventionist, and this was one of the best pieces I've had, I mean, we really hit a homerun when we hired Jaclyn and Ann, and we knew it would take a little bit of time for that role to evolve, but it's really worked out, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Gilligan is going to make an introduction.
Yeah, so I had quite an introduction. Mr. McGravy from North Andover Middle School actually told me I embarrassed him last time, it was so glowing, so, but tonight we've got back. Last year, if you remember, we had Mr. Patrick McGravy in, a social studies teacher from the North Andover Middle School. He came to talk about how he was going to do a five-week C-SPAN internship. I'm here to reintroduce him. He is back. He was one of a handful of teachers selected from across the entire United States to work at C-SPAN this summer to develop civics, social studies lessons, and when I say a handful, I think it was.
Three.
Three, less than a handful, half a hand.
That's hand-selected.
Yeah, I'd just say this, no need to introduce all his degrees and everything tonight. Mr. McGravy, and I've been in the district 19 years or 18 years, he's passionate about history, he's passionate about civics, and the coolest thing about it is he's passionate about teaching kids about this stuff. And what was really cool was, not only did he have to apply for this and to be selected as one of three across the whole United States, his kids played, probably, they were the critical mass and the tipping point that got him in. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. McGravy.
Great, thanks, thanks, Gilly, appreciate it. I have a couple of handouts, so I won't take up all your time. These are just some pictures, and then this is a lesson that I did for it. So yeah, so it seems like yesterday I was with you guys at the high school, all excited and jazzed about doing my five weeks at C-SPAN. It went by unbelievably quickly. It was, it was really, really exciting, and like Gilly said, it was the students. Speaking of my students, the first page is a picture of a friend of mine, and who I talk about in class sometimes, it's a high school picture, and the kids asked for my high school photo, I don't know why, and they made me a T-shirt, wanted to go to DC. So that was the T-shirt that the kids made me, that they wanted me to wear and things like that. So obviously, they followed me on, I created an Instagram account, they followed me, their brothers, sisters, previous people. Kids, the traffic on it was unbelievable, it seemed like every day we could do it. And some of the highlights in here, the second page, that's me at the desk at C-SPAN, that's the actual desk that they do all the, they do all of the stories from, and what's great about C-SPAN is all of the on-air personalities just walk around like anybody else, it's not really a big deal. And if you flip again, on the next page, that's Steve Scully, who has interviewed pretty much everyone, from Barack Obama to Margaret Thatcher, he's interviewed everyone. I got to meet, hang out with him, and, you know, and form a relationship with him. And then on the back of that, Brian Lamb, he's the founder of C-SPAN, he would pop into my cubicle all the time, and the respect that they have for teachers is unbelievable. I've never been involved in professional development like this. Not only was I there as a fellow, and part of my job was designing lessons and working on the websites, we had to present at two conferences, a high school conference and a middle school conference, so we had about, about 70 teachers, 35 and 35, and I, when I was talking at the, at the high school one, a couple, people were kind of asking me questions, and I, what I didn't know was, C-SPAN's never picked a middle school fellow before, they only pick high school fellows. So the middle, I think when they saw the students from North Andover, they were blown away, and they said, maybe we'll give middle school teachers a chance at this. And so that was, that was really a kind of a cool thing to be there, and the professional development was, it was great. And then, one last aside, and then I'll get to my lessons. I did, there were a couple articles in the Tribune that was tweeted out, and somehow Elizabeth Warren's, one of her staffers saw it, and I, next thing you know, I get a phone call, and they, they said, you know, at C-SPAN, it's Elizabeth Warren's whatever, you know, her aide, they called me, said Senator Warren wants to meet you, and she wants to hear about the C-SPAN fellowship, can you come at 1:00? So I said, of course, sure. So I get there, I bring the two other fellows with me, one girl was from, the two other fellows were from South Carolina and from Arizona, 24 and 25, so very young teachers. So that was, that was really cool. And so I brought them with me, just kind of lied and said they were from Massachusetts. And we whisked, got to her office, and the aide, unfortunate. And, uh, we whisked, got to her office and the, uh, the aide unfortunately, um, said, oh, Senator Warren, she's on the senate floor and she's, she's voting on the education bill. So I was like, oh, that, that's okay, don't worry about it. He's like, no, 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 wait a minute, and he's texting. Next you know, they whisk us on the train, she's got a five minute break. So the room off of the senate floor, we get whisked on. And we, I, I'm bumping into John McCain and Bernie Sanders and all these people. And then she comes out and, um, she couldn't have been more charming and asking me about the fellowship. And all her aides were really ahead of time saying, don't ask the senator for a picture. We will take a picture of you, it will be official, we'll email it to you. So with that, she said, you know, she goes, oh, your students following you. I'm like, yeah, they're following me on Instagram. She goes, well, let's take a selfie. I was like. So this picture in there is her and I in front of the Jefferson painting. And she was really mad because she thought that we should be in front of an Adams painting, but anyways. So, so that was, that was in there and, uh, so that was great. And then all my students, you know, got to see that and they were just like, wow, this is so great. And, and I was, I, I, and then I went into the gallery and I was there when they voted on the education bill. So talking about bringing it home to my students, I mean, it's gonna be unbelievable when I can tell them the entire process as opposed to a textbook. It was great, it was, it, it was unbelievable. Um, so a lot of things like that happened, they treated us really well. One of the things that they did is, um, they had us work on lessons. And it was almost like a TV studio where you would go in the morning and you would meet with the education team and you would pitch lessons and they would say, that's not really good, that's good. And one of the lessons that I pitched, I gave you a copy of, is, um, I have my students run a campaign. And so one thing C-SPAN's about is using video as a resource, not just as this aside to keep kids busy, to actually use it. And, um, I had never used video as much as I did here, but they have hours and hours of, of footage. So basically you have to use their video somehow. So what I did is, um, every single step of running for the presidency, I went on and found C-SPAN clips. They taught me how to edit, so I edited the clips down. So for every single step, so for example, um, you know, natural born citizen, I had a press conference when Barack Obama was addressing some of the things going on with that. Ted Cruz, um, announcing your vice president, I put, you know, John McCain and Sarah Palin's video clip. So all of those things I, I was able to do and, um, it was great. You know, I thought I would maybe get two or three lessons, but actually there were about eight of my lessons, um, that are gonna be on there and they're on the site now and they're published. And, uh, at C-SPAN Classroom. And, and that kinda leads into, uh, they've offered to do professional development, um, because I'm a fellow, for all the high school and middle school teachers, they're gonna totally do it for free. Send us the resources, we're gonna do some kinda Google link or some kinda Skype. Um, and, and I, and I did meet with Dr. Price, I know she's been busy this summer, but it was great to meet with her to kinda talk it about. Gilly, you know, has been so supportive, so we're gonna try to make that happen and, um, get the high school and middle school teachers on this great site because it's so free and everything's great, it's the resources and they, they're, they're willing to do some, some great things about it. And then the last thing they did for me, happened this week, um, there's a C-SPAN bus. And, um, this is a Greyhound bus that just goes all around from place to place, mainly college universities and high school. And, uh, right across the, my cubicle was the C-SPAN bus and they were designing it and I could hear everything and I would always say, can the bus come to North Andover? Can the bus come to them? They're like, no, 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 it's two years straight. And to make a long story short, in August, I get a, a call from them saying, where's your school again? I said, North Andover. They said, well, we're gonna be in Cambridge Sunday night and we're gonna be at Dartmouth, um, Monday afternoon. I'm like, we're literally right in the middle. So the C-SPAN bus came, um, Monday from nine to eleven and it was parked right in front of the middle school and all, and my students, my hundred and seven students, uh, Mr. Gilligan and, uh, Dr. Price all went through the bus, got to take their pictures, got to go on it. It was very, very exciting and it was really like a culmination for me to be able to do that. And the, uh, two C-SPAN reps were so impressed, my boss at C-SPAN called me and just said, those kids in North, and again, I'm gonna say this again, I said it at our last meeting. These, those kids in North Andover, they are amazing, they were engaged, they were polite. You know, they don't, we, civics doesn't really come to later on in the year, they were answering questions. And, um, to see their faces on the bus and have them leave the bus, they were really, really excited. So it was just an amazing thing. So lots of busy things, lots of great things, hopefully I can give back to North Andover with the professional development. And the, the bus was, it was just a blast, i- it was great. My only regret was, I really wished that the bus could've gone to the high school for my ninth graders, cause they really got it for me, but I think I would've been pushing it if I had asked them to do that. So, uh, I, I, I feel bad about that, um, but, but yeah, so that, that was pretty much my experience and I appreciate you guys all taking the interest in it and inviting me back to talk about it because, um, it was, it was great, it was amazing.
That's wonderful, Mr. McGravy, thank you very much for sharing and, you know, first of all, congratulations on the fellowship.
Thank you.
This is a great asset not only for this school, but also obviously for, for others who participate. You don't have to tell us how good our students are, I agree with you. But, you know, the, how can we promote this a little bit, a little deeper? I mean, obviously having the bus in town is wonderful, but the video that, um, that the student shot, that, that really was, was I think the tipping point.
There's two videos that I have, yeah, on my YouTube channel, so I can give you, you know.
Yeah, it'd be great if we could, if we could package this.
We wrote a piece about, um, Mr. McGravy in my first superintendent's newsletter. Um, and we've talked and we have some ideas about how we're gonna make sure that the professional development for the teachers, so.
Yeah, this is great and thank you very much for.
Appreciate it.
For bringing this to us and, and for being part of the community.
Yeah, and it was great, the Tribune did do a couple of articles on it too.
Yeah.
There were two articles on it, so that kinda promoted it a little bit too, once before I left and once when I came back. So that was really great.
Awesome, amazing summer.
So I, I have a, a couple of questions, Mr. McGravy. So, um, now that you're a superstar, where do you go from here, right? What's, what's the next step? Is it, will we see you on C-SPAN, I mean?
Um, well, there is a senior fellowship, um, that they, they, they ask the teacher fellows to apply for and you can't apply for it until six months afterwards. I'm definitely applying for it and that'll be a year, um, you know, all done in conjunction with my responsibilities. Um, working on curriculum and kinda continuing, uh, where I'm going, um, with it. And really, I'm just gonna try to spread as much about the, because the professional development, the teachers just couldn't believe how great it was and how hands-on it was. And every single one of them left with something that they were gonna do in September. And I really wanna bring that to North Andover and I want the high school and middle school teachers to come together and, and just, C-SPAN's willing to do all of this stuff for free. And, um, I wanna take advantage of it and, um, hopefully get more, more teachers using this amazing resource.
And I just have to believe the enthusiasm we reach students must have something to do with you, I'm just guessing. Just guessing. But I would say that's probably a major component there.
Well, you know, I, I, I tell you, again, the kids, the, the kids here are just amazing. I mean, even just talking to people, when, when they, I had to show some of the videos to all the teachers and people were like, those are eighth graders? Um, you know, and it just, it just, and, and, and the parents also, I mean, I've had so many emails and letters and, and things from parents, parents are so interested in this. And, um, it's just been great, really, you really feel, you really feel the community, um, and it's, 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 it's been great for me.
This is awesome and again, congratulations and, and I'd love, you know, the, and I don't know if this is part of why you picked it, but I mean, obviously now we're kinda rolling into the presidential election season. So I mean, this is just such a great opportunity to kinda, clips that you've kinda edited and pulled together and kinda pull that right as we're kinda hitting prime, you know, not now, but you know, obviously hitting primary season, you know.
Such an exciting group, um, that, you know, when C-SPAN bus was here, we actually had the group, kids break into groups and they each took a candidate and they researched and they were working for them, they didn't have to support them. Um, and they, they, they found some really interesting things, um, on, which, which, which was great and we're gonna carry them. Normally I do the presidency in, in February and March, but I'm flipping it and gonna take advantage of everything and this.
Yeah, this, no, this is awesome. I'm just curious, um, the other two colleagues that you had, I mean, this is kinda what you kinda put together as your lessons, what were theirs?
Um, one of the girls, um, did a really, really nice job with campaign finance and really breaking down campa- campaign finance and PACs and super PACs and the Koch brothers to really get it to understand because it's so complex and so challenging. And, um, so she worked on that, um, which, which was great. And the other one, um, looked at the candidates and their backgrounds and, um, their kickoff when they, when they. I felt so bad for her because every day there was a new candidate coming forward and she'd have to do more and more work and she'd be like, oh my God, I lost the lottery on this one, so you know. So, cause every day someone was coming forward and, uh, and I was like, well, that's, but yeah, so they did that. And it was great because they're really brand new teachers and I've been teaching almost twenty years. So just seeing them in action and, and seeing how mature and wise beyond their years was inspiring to me. And some of them had kinda had negative experiences with, I mean, I guess I am an older teacher. Um, and, and, and they, they, they were just like, wow, this is just so great that someone, you know, you know, they didn't say someone old like you, but someone, someone seasoned would come here and do that, so.
Seasoned, that's, that's what they do worse.
It was, it was a real mutual admiration society and, um, it, it was, it was great, it was fantastic.
That's awesome, and are you guys able to obviously share those lessons? So like even their lessons?
So all the lessons are on C-SPAN Classroom.
Okay.
Um, so if you go and, if you go on C-SPAN org, that's where C-SPAN puts a lot of their clips. But C-SPAN Classroom, any of you could create a user ID and a password. And all of the lessons that we did are on there, their political parties, electoral college, they're all broken down and, and, and very, very user friendly. Again, the website's free, anyone can use it, uh, cspan.org.
This is awesome.
Very good.
Really cool.
Thank you.
Uh, just one question, I've, I've known Pat for a long time.
Very long time, Dave.
Real, real proud of what you're doing here and it's much been an incredible experience. But my question really is, your buddy Welch here, how, how would you describe his haircut? It's like a mullet perm, what, what is this all about? That's pretty bad.
Yeah, it was a bad haircut and that's, yeah, and, and my hair around the back wasn't much better, Dave, so. That's why I think they put that picture, so yeah, it's pretty funny.
That's classy.
When I got that T-shirt, I was like, oh my God, I'm like, why are they asking me for my high school pic? They're eighth graders.
Great, great, great job, must've been a, must've been a great summer for you.
It was, it was fantastic.
Thank you for sharing with us.
I just wanna thank you so much for everything you do for our kids every day. Your passion is infectious and it was so great to see you with the kids on the bus. And, uh, everybody was excited, so I just wanna thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it very much. Thank you all very much for coming to this. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else for the superintendent's report this evening?
That's it.
Wow. Wonderful. So moving back to old business, um, looks like we have a second reading for the approv- and approval request for Crest Capital Fund. Mr. Limper, would you mind catch things up to speed?
As I mentioned last time when this subject came up, this is a, basically a perfunctory vote on the part of all the participants, all the members of the collaborative to allow the collaborative to form a, essentially it's a stabilization fund.
Let me interrupt us for a sec, um, can we have a motion to, uh, approve the establishment of Crest Collaborative as presented?
So moved.
This is your second? Thank you, now please continue?
Yes, um.
The, the motion to discuss it.
Okay, sorry.
Um, it, it, it just, it, it's to allow the collaborative to set up a stabilization fund to, in which they can put money for the purposes of capital expenditures, which they don't currently have. They are not eligible for any state funds for, uh, capital expenditures, buildings and stuff. So they need to raise their own money and this is the way to set it aside, um, and make it available when they need it. So this is just a mechanism to set up the fund and then, once the money's in there, it'll still have to be voted out the way you would from any stabilization fund, so. That's it.
Any other discussion? So hearing none, um, all in favor of voting to approve the establishment of the Capital Reserve Fund not to exceed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars balance for the implementation of the capital projects at Crest Collaborative, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That'll be four zero and no extensions, thank you, Mr. Limper.
Do we then just, do we have to sign something to report that back to them or?
Yes, Ben will take care of that. I think she probably sent him the copy the minutes that showed the vote.
Okay. Beautiful. Take that, moving forward. Um, second item on our old agenda, actually third item, is the reading approval of school committee goals. So this is nine senior packet. So. I guess, uh, can I hear a motion to, uh, accept or to continue the discussion on 2016 school committee goals?
So moved.
Actually, this isn't a voting, um, we're not voting, well, we're reviewing approving, is a, is a recommended action.
We don't have to approve.
Okay. So. Yeah, so maybe we should, we should have the discussion on the goals, cause I don't think we're gonna, we'd be in a position to vote for this tonight or vote on this tonight.
I'm sort of sorry that we didn't push the except provision, but it's very, for a few lines, it's very hard to read this way, but.
Yeah, I know we, we spent some time at the last meeting reviewing our goals and, and I think as, um, as we review the proposed edits, um, one of the things that we might wanna reflect on is which of these are really school committee goals in our, in our, um, policies versus which of these are so tightly connected with the district goals or the, um, the school improvement goals, that I just wanna make sure that we're not having yet another placeholder for what are really district goals, if that makes sense.
Uh, yeah. I would say, uh, Mr. Gross, that over the years, we've had some challenges in trying to do that. Set school committee goals that are completely distinct and, and non-trivial relative to the district goals. Um, I, I, we could certainly, I, I would certainly entertain, I would hope we could discuss these and say how we feel about these in terms of, are they our goals, are they the district goals? I would be the first person to say that we, all of these goals need the support, obviously, of the administration. We can't do it without them, so, I mean, it's, it's a collective activity that we're engaged in here.
So.
Go.
Yeah, I'm, so I actually was thinking about this, um, and got some feedback from Carla Bear when she looked at these. Um, I think of this as a Venn diagram, we have my goals as a superintendent, we have your goals as a school committee. I would posit, um, that the vast majority of the goals as right here are actually in the middle of that Venn diagram. And that, you know, school committee goals, and, and we saw some, I've seen some from other folk places and I would ask you to jump in, Mr. McDevitt, are often about operations of what school committee members are going to do, about getting out into the community, being more visible presence. These are very much, all of them, as I see them, um, require a lot of the district and the district leadership team and the district, um, employees. So I think it's gonna be important as we draft them. I, I would also say if they are district goals, I would ask that maybe we have an opportunity to be much more concrete about what we would accomplish. Because I think in many cases, these are vague and I don't really understand what that would mean that myself or the district team would actually be doing. So, um, you know, I, I am not opposed at all for us to have kind of the middle of the Venn diagram, but I think rather than calling them solely school committee goals, we should acknowledge that they are the middle of that diagram.
So one thing just quickly, um, I did kinda throw something out to the Massachusetts School Committee Association listserv to see if anybody could kinda share their goals and really heard back from, I think, two districts. And I think they echo a little bit of what Dr. Price has said in terms of, um, just operations on, on us and being out in the community and, and things of that nature. We have in the past kind of had these goals and, um, I think I'll be the first to kinda say we've, we've changed them over the years. And I remember probably about two years ago, um, you know, we had in there our average class size or our recommendations in terms of what they were. And I can remember distinctly kind of at the end of the year, looking like, well, we don't have enough classroom space and that's kinda, you know, like we knew we didn't meet it in September and, okay, we'll move on. So, you know, because that's kind of where that was. So I'm wondering if we, you know, were to put something in there that our goal is to get classroom size down. And I know we've got some enrollment things in the, um, I don't know, next half hour or so. You know, where we say, you know, we don't want any classroom to exceed, you know, twenty-two students if they're under grade two, for example. Does that then give us the opportunity to either work with you or the town in terms of, you know, kinda saying, well, this is the goal, that this, you know, as the voice of the community, we're saying, we don't want classes over twenty-two. And what, what does it need to take in, in order to figure it out? And obviously, once we've started the school year, I mean, it becomes a difficult challenge. But, you know, a goal isn't necessarily something that's obtained in, you know, a month or something. But as long as that's where we're going and we know that we are taking the steps for the subsequent year to reduce some of that, um, there's progress being made. But I think what we in the past have done is said, well, we didn't meet it, so let's just move on.
So again, to answer that, if we were gonna do this as a middle of a, a district goal, I think that Mr. Mealy and I would sit and actually come out with a multi-year timeline that was both on the operational side of making sure we had the funds to be able to hire the teachers and then also on the capital side to making sure that we actually had the classrooms to put the kids in. So, um, you know, we can have that goal for this year, we may see a small reduction and I'm gonna show you that we are, have been reducing the number of classes that are exceeding that over the last few years. But in order. the number of classes that are exceeding that over the last few years, but in order to get to no class over twenty-two, we would actually have to have a multi-year process. But, you know, the thing that I would say is if we did this goal, then, uh, at the next meeting or maybe the, another meeting, um, in October, we could present something that was kind of what we felt we could accomplish this year, what we would be able to accomplish within year two, um, because obviously something like reducing class size is a multifaceted issue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that requires extensive work with the town, that requires extensive thinking about our, our budget. Um, and, you know, we can build the classrooms and not have any funds to put a teacher in there. We can have the teacher and not have any place to put them. And so we need to do those in collaboration and that's going to take some time. So that's an example of if we have these as, as district goals that we agree on, I think we could put some really concrete steps that would be much clearer than something that feels like we want to do this, but how are we going to get there?
Right. And I, I think maybe the mistake that we have made as a committee is, you know, it, it's the goal for this year and not kind of taking it as that multi-year approach and.
That one in particular. I mean, I think, you know, hiring the superintendent last year, that was a one-year goal, but this one, um, and let's, but this one is.
Glad about that.
Yeah, so am I. Um, but this is, what I'm saying is, um, kind of a multi-year goal and.
But having said that, this also indicates to you our priorities, what, what we'd like people to work on.
Correct.
Saying that, that's why something like this, maybe these aren't the exact words, but something like this would be on this list so that we get that answered back about how this would work. And saying that is not capital our responsibility? The CIP is not that come from the school committee hypothetically?
Yeah, it would be.
Right.
Yeah, but we have to do the work.
I, I understand, but I mean, we should, we are the budgeting authority. We are the, ours is the budget, right? It's a school committee budget, right? You develop all the data and give it to us and blah, 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 but we try to help set some guidance on how that works. And so it's a collaborative process, that's all I would say, right?
Again, that's back to the initial point that I made, is that even if you have that goal, the work of developing the budget is on the, on the, on the shoulders of the, of the district administration, so.
I understand that completely. And all I would say is this just gives you some idea of what our priorities might be and what we think are as important in this calendar, in this school year.
Yep.
That's all I'm saying.
Did we ever talk about guideline versus goals? Because that's what you were just saying. It's more along the lines of guidelines, what we want you.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, prepare a budget that does this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, and I, you know, I, that's, I, I think there is a semantic problem here, because, you know, again, to Dr. Price's point, we're not going to, we, the school committee, the five of us, are not going to go out and do that. I mean, we could try, but we would fail. So, you know, it's, what I'm thinking, and that's why I like your Venn diagram view, to the extent that we can learn to, to work together better, more effectively, the school committee and the administration, I think that's, that's, would be the ideal outcome for me. And I, you know, we can figure out what the right language is and how to adjust these for guidelines, goals, priorities, whatever we want to call it, but that to me would be a really good goal, how we work together better. And we all need to go out now, you, you know, if that's what we decide to do, we need to be part of the sales team too, to sell the idea, right? I mean, it's going to take a sales job to make that happen if that's what we decide what we want. We need, you know, a million dollars in the CIP every year for five years or I, something, whatever, some deal, right? I mean, you know. So that's all I would say about that, just it gives us an opportunity to figure out ways to help each other.
Yeah.
To achieve these guidelines, goals, things, whatever, whatever the word people work.
Full agreement. So how, how do we, how do we work towards the refinement so that it, it doesn't just appear that it's more work for the district office or, or for the, uh, for the administrative team?
Can, you know, um, I haven't been through this process before, so I'm wondering when we have the conversations about budget priorities, how does this differ from that?
I, I mean, I, I think in the past, you know, we've, we've taken a look at the budget, kind of, you know, where we sat from a level services. Um, everything kind of somewhat stays the same as it did last year. And then if we know what the incremental increase is, like, you know, I, I don't just kind of make this up, but, you know, priority number one might be, uh, the development of, uh, opti, autism program at the middle school. And so, you know, there's a pressing need for that and failure to do that, you know, will result in out-ofplacement district costs and, you know, et cetera. So that then became priority one. And then we were kind of presented with a list of priorities and, you know, there was a, I don't know, a line that was kind of drawn through and that's kind of where we are. And then we would look at that and say, well, you know, we agree with that or, you know, we'd rather swap, you know, F and C or something like that. So it was really kind of, I think, um, administration recommendations in terms of what those rankings were.
Because I'm, I'm wondering, um, if we could actually have the north end of our school committee, um, priorities or, you know, our joint priorities rather than goals and that that gives us some direction when developing the budget, looking at those priorities. So for instance, you know, it's, it's just an idea of, of if we had some priorities.
So, um, when we get to the, the, the budget calendar, right, the first two items are the school committee's budget directives, so-called, right?
Yeah.
Which in some ways look a lot like this. They're not that different, although they are typically very, very much more specific. Um, so there might be a way to kind of look at this, so-called goals, the budget directives, so-called, and say, how do we sort of put that all together? Now, having said all of that, we've never done very well with this process, so I'm not saying we ever have. So, you know, we're making this stuff as we go along too. So, you know, here's what I, here's what I would, I would say to you. You tell us how we can be most helpful to you to make the right thing happen here, you know. And I, and I, yeah, the public relations, I'm okay with that. We can go out in the community and knock on doors and say, you know, the great school district, you ought to tune in here. Beyond that, there's more work that we may be able to help with. Um, and you tell us.
May I propose a different tact?
Okay.
Let's, let's review our policy on the goal setting.
Yes.
Okay, as a starting point to find out what the, you know, again, what the, what the essence of the requirement is. And then let's reflect based on that, if it's, if it's still in line with the approach that we're taking here, because I, I do agree that we're really converging on budget directives and that's not my read of the current policy.
But I like, I like Dr. Price's use of the word priorities. I mean, I think of these in some ways more as priorities, like this, um, the, the transition to performance-based budgeting, that's a priority, not a goal. That's not our goal. I mean, our, it, it, not really. You have to do it. You have to change the budgeting process. You have to do the budgeting this way. But that could be a priority for us because it helps us make budget, helps us make budget decisions if we have it in a performance package versus something else, right? So that could be a priority. In the same way, thinking about the facilities and seeing if we are serious about, um, class size guidelines should be data-driven, and that's what this says here. I mean, for someone else, we're not going to do it, but that's a priority for us too. Maybe we ought to put that discussion behind us and say, we're not doing that. We're not doing that in the next five years, you know, and if we want to do it, we have to plan five years from now to do it, because it's going to take that long to make it happen or something. So in that sense, um, the only thing on here that is, that are specific to the school committee are the, I would argue that the performance report, which is, ought to be a school committee-driven report, but we can have a discussion about that and our, and the policies, right? Clearly a school committee responsibility.
Well, I was going to actually bring up the policies. I mean, we tend to, and I think when Lori Burzoff was on committee, I don't remember if it was one year or a multi-year process that she went through policies and tried to make sure that they were updated. And, you know, I'm going to guess that was probably four plus years ago. So.
It was a multi-year process too.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think what we now do is, you know, when a law changes or, you know, something comes out, we make revisions to the policy and we kind of do that. But I would think a school committee goal that is not necessarily here is perhaps a re-revision and maybe it is a two-year and we try to go through, you know, to look at that. I mean, I, I think of that as being our work and the, these are not necessarily things that we are performing.
But we had that discussion at our last meeting. Okay, so Dr. Price gave us the opportunity to do a, a policy Pareto deal, right? So twenty percent of the policies, we use eighty percent of the time. Question, which of the twenty percent? And are they up to date in, in what we want to have to use? So her offer, her suggestion was, why don't you guys take a look first and see what you think that small number is? And then we can have a discussion. But that's still a collaborative effort because it's important for you too to get the right policies. It's not for us to do, it's for you, really. We're helping you do what you're trying to do. So then we have a discussion, say, are these the ones that would help you the most if we got them right or revised them or did something? And then we start work on those. And then, you know, that would be a way to start this process rather than what was done before, which was literally to go from A to the end and revise everything, you know, do some language cleanup, make sure the laws were up to date.
Right.
And get the crazy stuff out. I don't see us doing that. I see us doing a Pareto thing on this and deciding which ten or twenty percent of the policies we've got, the, the five hundred pages we've got there, we actually have a use or need to use, and let's look at those and see what we think.
Well, and.
You know, and, and Mr. Teresius helped us because he's pulled out a few of those and we've taken those steps on those already, so that's a good thing.
And in fact, that's the purpose of the policy subcommittee, that Ms. Warren and I are, are driving toward.
But again, to, to Dr. Price's point, there needs to be some, yeah, so what's the objective here? You know, yeah, good, you know, but it's not to go from A to Z. It's to have a plan, which is take the Pareto, look at the problem, you know, with the subcommittee. I agree with that.
Right, right, right. So, so I think there's linkage between the, what we put down for goals and how we deliver that. So I think there's clear linkage between the governance objective and goal that we have here and our actions. We have a subcommittee that's focusing on that. The subcommittee is developing a charter. The charter has got a schedule. The schedule is deliverables, full stop.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see us think about that for the other areas of where we feel we have goals, so that we can internalize it and the committee is doing the work, um, to serve the, the district. So.
I'm okay with that. Just, you take a cut. You write your work, Ted. I'm good too.
Yeah, okay.
You know, you asked me to do this, I wrote some.
No, no, absolutely.
I would think that the first two are not completely school committee goals. I think that those might be priorities that we could really, you, do you know what I mean? And we could put them as budget priorities. We could come back with some refinement on those. Um, and I think that the second two could be, um, the, the third, I think, is, is a school committee goal.
Yeah.
Um, and I think the fourth, we could, that might be joint, but there is some lifting on both sides of the equation. Um, so, you know, again, thinking of the Venn diagram is helpful to me. I think the first two are squarely in the middle.
Okay. So, so how do we move forward on this so that we can have our goals and have that, that, that connection between actions that the committee's doing in support of the district?
Let me just follow up the, the, could we call this goals and priorities? We had two categories, priorities and goals. If, per, per your suggestion, the first two would be priorities. The second, the, everything below the first two would be maybe goals, maybe school committee goals. Is that another, another way to do that? The, these aren't, the way we've done this in the past, when you get to the budget directives, these don't fit very well into the budget directives. It's not that easy, but you can, we can take a look when we get there, right? I'm just saying. So, think about it.
Just due respect, I, I feel like this is like most, we're making work for ourselves for really no real tangible goal. Um, I think, you know, having school committee goals, they're, they're district goals. We're not trying to, um, as Dr. Price mentioned, we can't, and ethics damage, and so we can't do these ourselves without the superintendent and her staff and her team doing it. So I just feel like we're just trying to do something that's like we're just doing it, with all due respect.
All right. So why, why don't we do this? Let's table that, this, the goals, because I'd also like to hear from Ms. Warren. Um, I think I, I tend to agree that the last two listed here are completely in the control and deliverable by the school committee with help and guidance from the district, but those are really, whatever we put for community relations, this is what we should be driving. Um, and I think governance, we own that by law. So I think that's, it's reasonable to, you know, establish an ongoing goal in that area. Uh, with regards to the first two, um, let's, let's do a little, um, a little brainstorming on the side if, if that's possible and maybe bring this back next meeting. Um, I want to try to do this in a way that, uh, we certainly are in, in accordance with the open meeting law and not that we're deliberating or, or developing this, but I guess would, would.
One thought to that point would be if people, if each of us wanted to send suggestions back to the central, the hub, right, to Bev, and we could compile those again, right? And have another set of ideas, maybe of new words or different words or something? I mean, that's one way we could do it legally, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I think, you know, along with Mr. Teresius' points, I mean, it's more, are we creating stuff or, you know, are we saying what the priorities are for us moving forward? Um, and, and part of those then become the budget directives. So.
Yeah.
I'll definitely get some stuff to Bev and.
Yeah, yeah, but, but. I would just hold that thought when we get to the budget directives, right?
Yeah.
Because the budget directives are pretty specific, right? Lay off no teachers, period. That's a budget directive. Don't reduce staff, period. That is very definite, right? There's no question. Um, these are something else, right? And, and this is not a one-year, as, as you pointed out, Dr. Price, review facilities needs is not a one-year goal. That's a long-term project. And so, I don't know, you know, a priority, I, I'd like to think of it as a priority and just think about how to express our priorities if we want to do that. Because we're asking, if we were to do this, we're asking the administration to do work on our behalf. That's what we're doing. And is that the work we want them to do in lieu of doing some other kind of work? I mean, at some point it ought to be a negotiation. We'll do this job, but here's what we're not going to do while we're doing that, right? Here's what we can't do while we're doing your job. So, you know, that's part of it. We're asking them to do work for us in both of these first two cases. So if we say these are important to us and we want to do this, we understand that there's a trade-off that you're going to make by not doing something else because you're doing this.
My staff and I are absolutely happy to take the first two and come up with what we think would be potential deliverables this year, um, to you, um, that we feel we could accomplish in, you know, this year of transition into a new superintendent. And we feel that there are some things, I mean, these are things we are focused on, these are things we are working on. Um, and we could absolutely tell, tell you what are some things. Um, and, and spend some time in school committee meetings, um, giving you updates on both one and two.
Good.
Um, and, and deliver in terms of our side of this. If you guys focused on three and four, we could come up with what we think would be some deliverables there. So you would at least feel informed as we're making decisions, because these are going to inform your decision-making on the budget.
Right.
Fair.
If that is helpful.
Very good, very good recommendation.
And I'm looking over at Mr. Mealy and he nodded, so.
And he wrote it down too.
And he wrote it down.
[laughter]
Great, great. Okay, so, so with the committee's approval, I'd like to table this and bring this up at, uh, the next meeting.
Which is next Thursday.
Which is next Thursday.
We'll work hard.
Is that sufficient time or do you want to?
We feel that we could definitely give you some deliverables by next Thursday on the first two.
Okay.
Really?
Yeah, we've been, this is not.
It's not new.
This is what we're working on.
Not rocket science.
Right? I mean, Mr. Mealy, I mean.
Or maybe just rocket science.
We've already been work, we've already been working on both of these, so.
It is, but they're very, very smart, so.
[laughter]
Great. Okay. So with that, um, I'd like to move on to our budget report.
As I had indicated in the email when I sent this out, the transition that's taken place from budget sense to communist, uh, one of the victims of that transition has been our ability to generate reports. They haven't, um, worked out the kinks yet. So, um, we, we're not getting the one you usually see. In, in all honesty, in September, it wouldn't tell you much anyway because we really haven't spent that much, besides the fact that, uh, all of our, um, almost all of our money is in personnel, so we don't have a lot of discretionary spending. Not sure why that's not coming up, but let's go add it this way. That's the same thing.
There you go.
Oh, recursion.
Yeah, it is. That's odd.
Bring it up from the packet?
No.
Update's ready, please.
Mr. Mealy, as you find that, is it all right if I go a little bit about the process?
Yeah, go right ahead.
So, um, one of the things that is a core belief of mine is that, um, budgeting should be very transparent with the leadership team. So we. So we have been doing a lot of work recently with our leadership team, principals, coordinators, assistant superintendents, where this is actually a document that they have seen. And so, you know, we shared in August with them that basically point four three percent of our budget has not yet been encumbered or allocated. So we are not looking at a huge amount of money to make it through the end of this year. And we were very transparent with folks about that. So we went through this. Mr. Mealy can explain this to you, and then I will talk about what process we went through this week. But we have, this is a document that all the leaders in the entire district have seen, which I think is a change of practice in terms of just that conversation this early on.
To the detail.
To the detail, correct.
Yep. So what we, the first thing I did during the summer is just took the original budget of forty-three million, six, twelve, four, seventy-nine, and that was based on FY fourteen actuals when we put in the, or the FY fifteen projections, when we put in the request. Looking at the end of year where we ended up, I then adjusted lines based on what we actually spent in FY fifteen and was able to identify some areas where we weren't going to spend as much as we had anticipated in the first place. So that's why when you see adjusted at forty-three, five, one, four, means we picked up almost a hundred thousand dollars in expenses that weren't going to happen based on last year's actuals.
But the six, twelve is the budget number, right?
Correct, that's our budget. So that gives us a little bit of a contingency. The other number that adds to our contingency is the annual turnover savings. And that one too, I'm not able to get a final number on that until probably another couple of weeks with the transition, because payroll is the last thing that's happening. So it looks like, though, just in doing it manually, that a hundred and thirty is a good number. So that gives us an added hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Our ISS, on the other hand, has traditionally, and again, based on actuals, has been forty thousand more than we've budgeted, so we had to account for that. I think Dr. Price is going to talk about how we're trying to address that. The other two lines, circuit breaker, is another possible pickup. We had budgeted around seventy percent. They are saying in the budget report that it's fully funded. Now, I don't know if that means to the seventy percent that they anticipated or to the seventy-five percent, which is what circuit breaker would be if it was fully funded. So we're waiting on that.
And they sent us an email saying that somebody was out on maternity leave and our numbers were not available.
I'm trying to find airplane by altimeter, you know?
Yeah.
So we are anxious to even put a number in there until we have that number.
Originally, we had thought we were going to lose a kindergarten grant, but that did end up being part of the budget, so that was good.
For this year?
Right. And then we have placeholders for any new positions that might come up during the year, any out-of-district tuition that might come up, transportation associated with that. And then the thing that we're keeping our eye on with town manager Andrew Mailer is the utilities. If you recall, we were instructed that we could reduce our utility line by two hundred and eighty thousand dollars based on the MRSKO project that took place. And so we're going to monitor that. And he has indicated that if that doesn't happen, he will work with us on making us whole with regards to that.
That number was included as part of our budgeting process, the two eighty.
Correct.
We took it out and used it for other things.
So let me just make sure I understand. So the first two blanks would be plus-ups, right? Hundred and a hundred and five additions.
So the kindergarten grant-
They would be. Well, the grant was going to be a loss, but it didn't happen, so.
It's zero.
It's zero. Right, we did not, we did not account for losing that. We were saying it could happen and that's going to be another hundred thousand. Exactly.
So that means there's not a negative one oh five in that?
Exactly. Yep.
And the hundred, but the hundred would be a plus-up?
It would be.
Okay. And the others would be decrementals, right?
Yeah, and we're going to get into those right now.
I understand.
Can I ask just a quick question on the utilities? We were guaranteed that as part of our contract with that, so, okay.
Yep, and that would be part of the discussion, but the nice thing is we wouldn't be kind of hostage while it got worked out.
But wasn't there, okay, but wasn't there a, some form of like a penalty to them as well?
Yes.
All right.
That's why it was safe to take the two eighty out.
Right, right, right. Okay, I'm just making sure that, I wanted to confirm the penalty.
Mr. Mealy, would it be helpful for me to talk a little bit about ISS before we get into the additional positions? So one of the challenges in this district has been that our sub-budget has annually overspent based on what we have budgeted. And that has become an issue for many years in this district. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Mealy? So one of the things that we did at our August retreat, and we actually did spend a lot of time this past week, is really trying to first come up with an equitable allocation of the sub-budget. Most of it had been done, kind of think Cow Pass, well, it used to be this much, so it's just going to stay that much, and we're going to roll it over. So we actually developed a formula based on the staff that you sub for, being an equitable amount of money per staff member across the district, so that the schools' budget were based on their staff numbers, with a slight difference for both the high school, because the high school, actually, when you bring in a substitute, they can cover multiple teachers, so that the amount per high school teacher was reduced. And a difference for the early childhood center, because of the challenges of multiple teaching assistants, and we just came up with a number for them. So, but for the vast majority of the schools, kind of an equitable distribution that all of the leadership team felt represented a fair distribution of the funds. And that was a two-meeting process, and we've come to that number. We're very close to that number. And then it was really just creating some conversation about how can we not have these budgets far exceed what we have projected. So conversations about when a teaching assistant is out, do we actually get a substitute for that teaching assistant? And some conversations about, in some cases, we might, in some cases, we may not. Another practice that was happening was if a teacher was out, the teaching assistant was taking over for the teacher, which is a thirty-five dollar amount for that teaching assistant for the day, which was previously negotiated. But then what was also happening was the teaching assistant was being replaced by a sub. So that was actually costing us as a hundred and ten dollar substitute rather than a seventy-five dollar substitute. So not continuing that practice. We also talked about the fact that some, in some cases, we were using ISS if we had a situation where we were waiting for an assessment or a full-time teaching assistant. So think kindergartener showing up, really challenging in the first few days. We weren't quite knowing that was going to happen, getting an ISS person to do that. We actually created a line called temporary teaching assistance that would be approved through central office. So if we knew that there was a kid who was needing support, rather than pulling that out of the ISS budget. Lots of conversations about how can we keep this in better line that I think have been very productive. So our hope is that we will be able to keep that in line. Everyone has really bought into the process. And, you know, we will be tracking that on a monthly basis. So our hope is that that forty thousand dollars will not be needed. And it would be wonderful, given our reduction of our curriculum resources line items in our budget, if by the end of the year we were able to not spend that forty thousand dollars. We could actually move that towards curriculum resources, which I have to say, in my quick time here in the North End of Republic Schools is an area of great need. And that could be something we could spend in May, rather than, because we don't want to, we want to hold this because we're anxious that this has historically been at least forty thousand dollars above, so.
Dr. Price, what is the total budgeted amount for the year for ISS?
So it's three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for daily subs. That does not include long-term subs, which is a completely different line.
And that's not part of this either?
Correct.
Okay.
I think I'm remembering that number correctly. Correct, Mr. Mealy?
That is correct. Yeah, that's amazing.
So it's, this is like more than ten percent than one percent or something?
Our hope is that we can keep this in line, and by starting in August, we might be able to get there.
Okay.
Okay, so that would give us a contingency to start of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And as Dr. Price indicated, we've met with the leadership team, and there are things that are already happening. Do you want to talk about these?
Yeah, so we have a need for some teaching assistants. Again, just so we're clear, we've changed the name from parrot to teaching assistant, so just so our language, we're clear on that. We have a need for a teaching assistant at the high school. We have vetted this thoroughly. There is a need for a one-on-one coupled with two students in a program. There really is no way around that one. We have a need at Franklin with, also within a program, for a teaching assistant. We have a situation where it's just not working in a room. I've been there multiple times. Mr. Gilligan's been there multiple times. Mr. Mealy's been in the room. Ms. Carbone's been in the room. We've tried to fit a square peg into a round hole, and we need another person there. We have two students at the Kittredge who are in need of one-on-one, one being in kindergarten and one being in first grade. Again, we've looked at all of the other options that are possible. And then, as you can see, and we'll talk a little bit more, our high school enrollment continues to grow. And we have not increased our speech and language support for our students there who need speech and language support. And we are in desperate need of an additional day for our speech and language person whose caseload is just way bigger than what is currently being allocated.
Do our students have that in their IP?
Their IPs. So. Yep.
What's the ITA?
That is a temporary teaching assistant. So I will go through, so our feeling here was that the one, I will say, at the beginning of the year, we had, when we allocated our teaching assistants, we actually kept one in abeyance. My knowledge of teaching assistants and how they grow over time, we had, we had four teaching assistants coming from the sergeant being allocated to other places in the district. And I made the decision early on in my tenure to not allocate one, in knowing that this would, we would need it. So you can see that one of the teaching assistants at Kittredge, we already said, already funded, so that was kind of the one we held. We made a decision about the, actually specifically, the kindergartner at Kittredge to put a temporary teaching assistant in. So remember the ISS line? It's a very volatile situation. We're not sure that the student is going to be able to remain in the schools. So it didn't make sense to put in a full-time teaching assistant when it was up and down in terms of the kid. So really, what we are proposing at this point is an additional teaching assistant at the high school, an additional teaching assistant at Franklin, and the additional point two speech, which is, would be the bottom line. However, I think Mr. Mealy has some late-breaking news.
We have the benefit of sharing this with the team. Dr. Price, then, after the meeting, when we talked about these needs, and that allowed the team to, you know, question the need and agree that these were indeed needed at the specific sites. She was contacted by an elementary principal who said that he felt he could do it one less teaching assistant than he had and could use it to fill instead of funding one of these positions. And I would actually delete that, but this is an odd occurrence.
View only.
I created this document, and yet I have view only.
So what we're actually only looking for is twenty-eight thousand dollars in new positions, because we've been able to reallocate. And I think we should, I think we should say it publicly. I mean, we have, we were moving a teacher. Greg Landry said that he would be able to move somebody from the Atkinson, which is a really great nod to him that he understands this, and we would be able to move that person to fill some of these open positions. So we were pretty excited by that phone call, I will say. I did a dance.
So are we actually hiring new people, or are we just-
We would be hiring, in this case, we would be hiring three new people, one at the high school, one at the Kittredge, but we also had, already had that funded. And, I'm sorry, only two new people, and then increasing one person by point two a day.
So for sixteen thousand dollars, you're going to hire a new person?
That is how much, teaching assistant.
And how many hours a week is that?
Thirty.
Thirty a week? And that include benefits and all that stuff too?
So benefits is not reflected in our operating budget, and we have shared this with Mr. Mailer. That becomes on the town side.
And the point two increase, does that move the person, are they already receiving benefits?
From point four to point six.
Okay.
They work two days. The caseload at the high school has increased such that we need them another day.
So now they get benefits?
Yes.
They would be eligible. Yes.
And just so it's clear to me, these are all special education expenses, basically?
Yes.
Correct. And then the other category that we're used to is the out-of-district tuition. We have had, and I am only using letters for students, we had a student who had to go from a out-of-district placement to a residential. That's always a large bump up. We've got a couple of students on forty-five day assessments. We had a move-in, and if you recall with the move-in, if it's a private, we don't have to worry about it until the following year. If it's a collaborative, we get them right away. And then we did have a move-out to almost offset that move-in. So right now, we're looking at an increase in out-of-district tuition of eighty-four thousand dollars. That number for new positions goes down to twenty-eight thousand dollars. And the total, that hundred and twenty-eight will increase to one hundred and forty-four thousand as our contingency.
And that's not including whatever comes from circuit breaker?
No, hold on a second.
It goes down.
Yep. Well, no, one twenty-eight, let's see what that formula is. It's just a number. So forty-four goes down to twenty, to twenty-eight. One twelve.
So it's a hundred and twelve. So we reduce the one twenty-eight to, by sixteen thousand, so it's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And that would then give us-
Then that gets subtracted from the one eighty-eight.
That would give us seventy-six thousand left.
Right.
Which is additional sixteen.
Yep.
Right there. Yep. So that gets increased by sixteen.
So seventy-six then?
Yep. And again, you know, we've shared this information with Mr. Mailer. You know, again, we have the potential of the additional hundred thousand dollars for circuit breaker, which obviously is, would be very well spent, especially with the out-of-district. And, you know, the stuff that is eligible potentially for the contingency that is held by the town is the out-of-district. You know, our hope is not to dip into that much this year, but these would be eligible for that if necessary.
Is the six thousand for the residential over and above what we're already paying?
Yes, that's in addition to. That's not the total for the year. Correct. And I have had a communication from Bill Callahan, the chair of the finance committee, asking to share with him the status report. And I replied and indicated that I would be happy to attend the next meeting with this to explain where we are. Because when I met with them in June, I think it was June, right? I had committed to keeping them, you know, giving this to them as soon as it had gone to you guys, and that I would be willing to attend the meetings.
Jim, you can't fill this in. You've got to go with this. You've got to pretend this, and they'll never get it.
Do you think we'll have the actual numbers coming out of municipal package before next week? Or are we going to be kind of flying from what we think is in the program?
Well, the only, it's a matter of formatting. The only number-
The context in the numbers though, right?
Yeah, and the only number, like I said, and I did it manually, was the turnover savings. It would, it would be, you know, a thousand or two up or down, so.
I just, I just would hope that, you know, the, when the real numbers come out, they are in agreement with whatever we go with. And I understand it's just the turnover savings that is questioned.
Yeah, and like I said, it's not a matter of not having the numbers. We have the numbers.
Okay.
It's just a matter of formatting the report.
Okay.
Generating the report from MUNIS.
My only suggestion, Mr. Mealy, might be in the part above, which we now can't see, to the areas, the text for the potential debits, I would make that red personally. Those three lines there. So it's color-coded as something that would be less, anything that's a reduction, right?
Yep, stress points.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So they'll know that those are debits, and the other's a credit, actually. The hundred thousand is a credit. And the, and you say the hundred and five is just there to tell us we don't have a problem, basically, right?
Yeah, yeah. People were wondering about that, and that's what happened.
So basically, it's a zero in that cell.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, after, you know, the next, after the meeting with the FINCOM, I can get rid of that line.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I know we have a new item on the approval for the additional staff positions. Are there other comments on, or any other presentations on the current budget, any other questions? And when is the FINCOM meeting?
That was part of my email. I asked Bill when the meeting was, so I could attend. I could look it up too. I'm sure it's on the town website.
Right. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so on to new business. So we have an informative update on our enrollment picture.
Yeah, so I hope you have seen the enrollment analysis that Alicia Murray did. She did an excellent job on this. I just want to shout out to her. She did a great job, really trying to bring some life to some numbers for us. So I just want to highlight a few things. I don't need to go through every chart here. But you can see we look at the enrollments pre-K to two, three to five, six to eight, and nine to twelve. And you can see that since nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four, our greatest growth areas have been at the middle school and at the high school, with a consistent trend up. There's nothing overwhelming- There's nothing overwhelmingly surprising for this year, a few blips here and there, but nothing in terms of just overall enrollment. And then, we want to look a little bit at kindergarten. I know especially since we went to full-day kindergarten. I asked us to pull out the kindergarten enrollment, which you will see right here, slightly down this year after a slightly down year last year. So I just wanted to highlight that.
That actually almost seems like it's really kind of coming back to a level.
Yes, coming back down to level. Correct.
So they must have...
Yep. And then, we always look at North Andover residents attending private school. And you can see the trend K to 2, 3 to 5 is down over the last few years. Again, I like to look at these graphs, not for one year, but trends. Pretty level at the middle school.
Can I ask just a clarifying question?
Yeah.
These are not necessarily kids who have left our schools, but they are...
Anybody attending.
They may have just started off in...
Correct.
All right.
Anybody. And then you'll see slightly down, again, as a trend at the high school level with a slight increase this year in, over the last two years in grade 12, which was interesting to me. Who knows? And then, if you look over time, this is all the aggregates of those, you'll see that we had fewer North Andover residents starting at the end of the, in the 2011-12 year, attending with a slight increase last year. But again, only slight. Thought that would be interesting for you. And then, yeah?
I was just going to say, one thing that I think we've seen in the past that I think has been helpful, too, is, and I think it's been pretty positive over the past couple of years, eighth-grade retention, basically, going into the high school. I don't know if it's here, but at some point, that may...
I can pull that out.
That may be an interesting thing to look at. And I think...
Yep, absolutely.
And I think this year as well, obviously, there were, at least St. John's Prep, you know, opening up at the 6th grade and 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. But I'd be curious to see what attrition may have happened there.
Yep.
And we may not know some of that numbers until, I think those usually would be finalized by the end of the month or so, but...
I can have that.
Okay.
Especially from the 8th to 9th. I think this is, the next chart is what you've been used to getting, which is a chart form. If you look, I've kind of pulled that out. If you, well, I'm going to skip over it a little bit. I did some analysis looking at class size averages, which is something based on your priority mine, too, is just looking at class sizes for the last five years. And the black line there is the school committee set targets of what we want in terms of class sizes. 22 being K to 2, 25, 3 to 5. So I'm looking specifically at elementary school class size. And you can look at each school individually there. K, I will say that this year, K class sizes are very favorable. And we can see that when we visit classrooms. That's not, this really plays out when we walk into classrooms. Is that correct, Mr. Gilligan? We're seeing that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know the struggles we had in the last two years of kindergarten, two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you look at K and you look at 1, 3rd grade, sorry, 2nd and 3rd grade still remain a concern. You know, a class size bar of 25 in 3rd grade is to begin with. So if you're above that, that's concerning. And then 4th and 5th. And then I, the thing I wanted to draw your attention to was the last graph, which was the percentage of classes K through 5 over the class size goal. And I am pleased that we are reducing that number. And so we have been able to do that with a high in the 2012 to 2014, and slowly, we're getting that number down. My own concern about that is our class size averages that we say are acceptable are quite high. So my concern is that even at 40%, I as superintendent, and I would hope you would not want me as superintendent, to be okay with that number.
So is this the right measure that we want to be focusing on as we go into budgeting? That this is really the metric we want to drive down?
I think that this is a metric that's important to us. What percentage of our classes K to 5 are over our targets? And our, because our targets are not aggressive.
Yeah, yeah.
No.
And so if we could continue this trend, I mean, I'm also very cognizant of the reality, both facilities and finances, that this is not going to go to zero in a year. But I think if we could continue this trend over the next few years, we could get this to a place where class sizes above our desires were not considered the norm. They were actually kind of one-offs rather than, you know, at times, 5, over 50% of our classes.
But from the grade bar charts, it looks like to me, the only grade that really shows some significant stress is 1st grade or 2nd grade, really.
It's 1st and 6th.
And the others are okay. I mean, and some are good. The other thing that we've heard anecdotal information over the years, and we've never really had much of a discussion about it, was significant overcrowding at the middle school. Where we've, my impression has been that we've always been kind of up to the high watermark at the middle school, and there's been some problem about having less space there. Is that true or not, or is that just bad anecdotes?
I think anecdotally... You know, I recall that, too. It'd be interesting to actually take a look at the data. I do know that we've had some pressure points in 6th grade over the years, and if you guys can recall that. 6th grade in particular, I think that was, had to do with the number of, you know, I think if we've looked over time, and typically, we probably had 15 5th grades, and there might have been 14 teachers.
I can easily do this for you.
And we can easily do that, but I'd say it's, I think it was 6th, then.
For example, when you look at the enrollment table, there's that one big bubble class going through 7th grade.
Yes.
And there's a 6th grade class that's pretty big.
Yep.
So there must be some stress.
Yep. So I absolutely will do that.
Yeah, okay.
But I do think that this metric is one that is useful for us to think about.
Absolutely. Yeah. So I agree, but I share your concern. I mean, Kittredge is consistently over class size average for 2nd and 3rd.
Yep.
Do we have any way to mitigate that for this year, or is that something we're just going to have to live with?
Yeah. We, see, the challenge with a Kittredge is, it's, we don't really, and we've done a lot of work. I mean, Mr. Gilligan, again, if a family has moved in, we have said you can't go to 3rd grade at Kittredge, which is a challenge. But again, this is just a very challenging thing to solve on a short-term basis.
The real hard thing in small schools like Kittredge and Thompson is 2's too large and 3's too small.
Right.
And there's no in-between. And say we wanted to put another teacher at Kittredge, Mr. McDevitt, his kids go there, we wouldn't be able to find a room for them.
Right.
So, you know, there's ebbs and flows, but in the, they have consistently been 2 across the board for a long time.
But short, short of redistricting every year, how do you, you're kind of chasing tail every single year, then?
So there's a number of ways to deal with this. One is, you know, to create opportunities to deal with bubbles in schools, so that you might have 3 3rd grades one year, 3 4th grades the next year, you know, but then go back to 2 3rd grades, so that you can actually deal with a bubble situation. Another, I mean, I'm just giving you examples of what districts have done. Some districts have actually created multi-grade classes. So 2 and 1/2 might be the right number. So you actually would have a 2-3, rather than just a 2 and a 3. And then the other things that districts have done is to create some buffer zones in communities where the school actually is allowed to assign a student in a specific area, the district, to a specific school based on the differences within the district. So those are all, you know, on the table in terms of thinking. The challenge for us right now is because of our constraints with actual physical space, it's hard for us to consider almost any of those.
The other thing, too, that I would say is, over the years, the two true neighborhood schools are Kittredge and Thompson, right? So parents get, they seem very uncomfortable about it. They say, "Well, okay, we can get your student into a class size much smaller if I send them to Atkinson." And they go like, "No, we're not doing that. They're staying here for 27. I'm good." So that's, that's another sort of underlying issue here, where parents like the neighborhood school. And these are two classic examples here. And they don't want to move the students, even though the class is, the class is big. So that's an issue, too.
And the other challenge for us, I mean, just to kind of also talk about a cost of moving students, is that there is a cost of transportation and time on bus, which we heard a little bit about beginning of this year, so.
And to the, to the Kittredge team, I mean, they are one of our better-performing schools, which is also telling that class size is not the only predictor of how the school is performing. So...
And some of those, you know, the classes right now over Kittredge, I believe it's the 3rd grade of 28, are definitely not something we...
Don't like that.
Right.
Yep.
But so when we look at even that, I mean, just as a good example, right? So last year, I mean, they were a little bit high, but this year, they have jumped...
Graded one, 3rd grade?
Well, like, kind of the 2nd grade last year, for example, at Kittredge, which is now the 3rd grade. You know, they were under the 25 this year. I'm sorry, they were under the 25 last year. And this year, they are now over that. So, you know, I think that kind of goes back a little bit to the point of the, it's closed at Kittredge. You know, we, we perhaps need to have some different conversations about really trying to, you know... You can go to Atkinson. You can go to, I mean...
We actually do that. I mean, it's, regardless of whether you redistrict or you don't, we still have the same amount of kids that we have to distribute.
Right.
And we, we've actually closed classes, as you guys know, in the past.
Right.
When we hit a particular number, it's not, as Dr. Price echoed earlier, or was talking about earlier, the sentiment. I mean, these class sizes are high across the board, and they've been so for many years. So typically, we'll be able to use out-of-neighborhood requests. You know, so for example, when I left Thompson School as Principal, I know we had 51 students there that didn't belong to the Thompson School, but had applied out-of-neighborhood to go there for a whole host of reasons, that may be on the way to daycare with another child, that could be on their way to work. And people provide transportation. But at the same time, we very much close classes out at a number, particularly when they're new to North Andover. You know, all the schools, with the exception of Sergeant, are really clustered. I mean, Dr. Price and Mr. Mealy have been walking to most of them. I scoot, but, um... So, I mean, it's not that big a jump if you're new to North Andover. You know, you may have wanted to be at the Kittredge School, but you're going to go to Thompson School. And a big factor plays into it is the transportation, because when we move someone, like an involuntary transfer, we have to provide the transportation for them. So we really take a look and work closely with the principals and Pam Zingalowski from Transportation to figure out, "Okay, Mr. Landry, we have this 1st grader, but there is no bus that goes to Franklin or Sergeant from this particular neighborhood. Can we get that to 25?" And that's sometimes where we get a little bit higher. But we do close out. And, you know, as someone mentioned something about redistricting, we did that many years ago, not too long ago. You know, we still have the same amount of kids that have to go here, and there's ebbs and flows. And particularly at Atkinson and Thompson, that's where we get some of the kids we don't know we're getting, because we really watch the census closely for kindergarten and all those things. But there are move-ins, there's move-outs, so. I think Dr. Price has some long-range ideas that she mentioned, but that involves finances for staff, but also facility, taking a look at facilities.
And 3rd grade is definitely a bubble for us, Mr. McDevitt. I mean, if you look, there's not a lot of other places to put the kids, although there may be 1 or 2 or 3 fewer kids. It's, it was, it's a tough year for us.
And I think Mrs. Lempert really kind of said it as well. And I know, you know, some of my, my kids are in large classes. If you were to tell me, you know, "Well, you can go down to a class of 24, but they have to go to a different school," no. I'd rather have them in a class of 26, because I got to have all my kids, well, 2 at least now, in one school, and I can support one, you know? So it's a challenge. But, I mean, this is actually, and I know we've seen different variations of this. This is very nice to see. I mean, I think, looking at this and kind of seeing, I think Mr. Gross, you know, referred to the little hockey puck, or hockey stick, sorry, of kind of some of that declining K to 5 over our goal. So, I mean, I think that that's good, and I think that's a good indicator to kind of start to...
You all say what you think. This doesn't make the class size problem look as bad as I normally think of it being. You know, it's not good, but it's, you know, I sort of, sometimes get the impression it's totally out of control somewhere, and we just don't know it.
So I would just push that 40% of our classes over the goal is, you know, as we articulated in the conversation of my report of the, we are 122nd in class size out of 125 in the 495 area. So it's getting better. My comment would be, I think we have a lot more work to do.
Fair. Thank you.
Question. On the pre-K enrollment, and maybe I need a little more education on this, and maybe it's a, you know, a different...
Yes.
A different matter altogether. But we go from 129 in our pre-K, and this year, we have 302 kindergartners. That's a big jump, obviously.
Yeah, they don't go.
Well, that's what I want to try to explore. The reasons behind that, is it space? Is it reputation? Is it cost? Do we have enough space over at the EEC to take more kids?
No. Well, no.
The ECC is for those students that we have to educate at that age. And then, we have the ability for, typical, this is a term that's used, to supplement those. And we're right about max, I think, at the preschool. But that's what the purpose of preschool is. And there are a lot of students that are off at, you know, private schools.
Oh, yeah. My kids, my kids are at Montessori preschool right now.
Yep.
I'm wondering, you know, my question was, can we take more kids who are private pay to help subsidize?
We have a waiting list.
You have a waiting list, eh?
Yeah, we do.
So we're maxed out?
We take what we can.
And about how, out of the 129 that are there now, how many are, let's call it, say, private pay or...
On average, it'd be about half.
It's an, so in Massachusetts, when you have an integrated preschool.
Yep.
You take students with special education needs, and then you also have typically developing or other model peers. So I'd probably say it's about 50-50, and that's what it is in most communities. It may be 60-40. That's something we could find out, but we don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Do you know what the cost right now is of, do you offer like 2 days, 3 days, 4 days? Do you guys offer...
Well, I know this. I know there's no special treatment, because my daughter didn't get in, and she ended up going to the Montessori, and I was an employee for 15 years, or 12 or so.
But we could absolutely find out the cost, yes.
Yeah.
I think it's 35.
I think it's 35. That's what it was a few years back.
And it's also eligible for free re-dos based on income level.
Right. Those are the kids that, you know, we have, we have to go and tackle. There's obviously a lot of, you know, families in this town that can afford to pay, you know, going to Montessori. It seems like every church in town has some kind of preschool. So I'm wondering if there's a way to capture more of those students, but you're telling me because of space, we can't capture more people. Do we know if our price point is on the mark with some of these other, other schools?
It's fairly consistent. We did it a couple of years ago. Yeah.
Analysis?
It's controlled, just like kindergarten is, by the state of how much you can charge. We're not at the max, but we're not far from it. But it's pretty consistent with others around. And we also compare it to non-public school preschools.
That we should.
Yep.
Yeah. In retrospect, one of the things that we might have done differently with ECC is designed it for a 2-story building rather than a single. That, you know, we're limited to a single-story structure at this point.
Right. We pretty much are maxed at what we can have there for students.
Yeah. Spent a chunk of time there on Wednesday, and, I mean, the classrooms are full in terms of what is acceptable in terms of student-teacher ratio and space, you know? So we are, and we have a waitlist for typical paying students. So it is a space issue.
Just anecdotally, I don't remember. Thankfully, many years, not that many years ago, but enough, they did offer, I think it was like a 3 or a 4-day option. There was like a different way that you could do that. And I think the price was almost about the same as what... We didn't go there. We went somewhere else. It was almost the same as what we were paying. It might have been a little different, but it was pretty much the same. So...
It does speak to the most difficult part. We're working on developing an enrollment projection model. And the most difficult grade to predict is kindergarten, because the census, we don't get complete information. And we've been talking about sending out, using the website, just different ways to get information regarding who's coming. But that's the most difficult grade to predict.
Right. I understand that. It just seems to me that that would be a way for the district to make a few bucks, because these preschools are everywhere.
Yeah. When it first opened up, there was talk of, "Well, maybe we could take students from other districts," by the...
There's plenty in North Andover that would look at it.
Exactly. Yeah. And I'm just saying that it filled up and has been that way for quite a while now.
I'm pretty confident that Mary Lou Connors is watching us as we speak right now. And I'm sure that she would be happy to come and explain her program in some depth to us.
I'm happy to meet with her privately if anyone else wants to.
Add more work to the...
So let me just, I wanted to make sure that the public knows that...
So let me just, I wanted to make sure that the, the public knows that the, we were very grateful to get the school that we got. And we're very thankful that we didn't ever have to use the O-word, which would have been the death of the project. We all fit that in with town money and got what we got. And we were very grateful for what we got. And the, my understanding of the constraint is that we can, we could have no more typically developing students than you have specialized students. So it's a one-to-one. And you have to first take all of those, but you can't take more than.
Correct.
That's the, that's the law. So, so we can't, we can't have five-to-one ratios of typically developing to specialized. It's a one-to-one, maximum one-to-one.
So I will come back to you next week with the attrition from eighth to ninth and some middle school numbers.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to move on to the budget calendar if we can. This is another informative update.
Mr. Mealy, I have it right here.
Yes, this has been developed.
Been updated?
And sent to us by the town manager. And it's very similar to last year's schedule. Let me just hold this up a little bit.
I think it's updated.
It's updated?
Updated. We got another one this afternoon at about three.
So the key dates for us, superintendent will submit a budget to the school committee on January 7th. We will have the principals available between the 7th, or from, on the 7th until approval. And we will have the public hearing on the 21st of January. And final approval is scheduled for the 4th. And if you recall, what happens is they work backwards from the date of town meeting to the generation of their report from the FinCom. And so they need it from their departments, including the school department, by February 4th.
Now, Mr. Mealy, do, does this budget policy statement date apply to us also? Is that the Board of Select question of October 19th?
Yeah, that's not us.
But we have one. We have directives which would be similar to.
Right, but that, that's up to the school committee.
Okay. And if we want to have any changes to the CIP, do we have to have them submitted by October 28th?
No, if you recall, what we've done in the past is submitted our, what the school committee is considering, or has been recommended by the superintendent. And then there's still room for adjustments to be made. So we'll present to the school committee around that date and prior to the 28th, right?
Okay.
And then if, if something changed, then we could make that adjustment.
So I would ask Mr. Gross, and if, if we're gonna have budget policy or budget directives, should it be something like this date when we would consider them, if we wanted to do that? So that we're kind of out ahead of the process too, if we're gonna do directives to the administration question?
So I would, I would assume that it would need to be back from the January 7 day in time for the.
Whenever, yeah, sometime.
I would think it would need to be a solid month back. I mean, I don't think we could make it December 30th and expect the press to come up with a budget that.
So honor about Halloween, I would think that's when the.
Right.
That's when we should have that in place, so.
And I will say that we have been, as you know, Mr. Mealy and I, meet with the town manager on a very consistent basis, and we have talked about our capital improvement plan as I'm learning about the process here in North Andover. And we are not behind for next year in any way at this point.
I think you got it familiar with the five-year plan, and, you know, if something comes up, you make adjustments. But for the most part, what you're working on is the new fifth year.
Right. And these dates are consistent with our, well, actually, we don't have meetings scheduled past January 1st.
So I've, I've temporarily put on the next week's calendar a conversation about our meeting dates past January.
Fair.
Mr. Mealy, just to refresh my memory, the only line item, as far as I know, that we have on the current CIP in, out years, is the placeholder for the classrooms or whatever.
That's there, and.
The roof stiler? Or the sprinkler?
No, no, the ITV, annual IT amount.
Oh, okay.
Is also on there.
The sprinklers aren't on there anymore, though. That's in that.
That got combined in with the classroom amount. Yep.
And that's, what, what is that number? Do you recall?
Well, what will be going forward this year at town meeting would be the design of what we need to do, based on what we determine the needs to be, which would be 10% of 1.5 million, 150,000, and 1,350,000 would be the following year.
Okay.
And our job is obviously to assess what num, level of classrooms that we need.
Right. And where?
At this point, I think it's what level of classrooms, and then we would use, you know, it would not be prudent to say where without understanding the architectural impact of where.
Right.
Except the what is, is the funding issue, right?
Correct.
For the design? Okay. Great. Thank you. So, all set? Okay, so that's quite all right. The last item under new business is first reading for request for approval of additional staff positions.
So we are requesting approval, and we would put it on next week's to vote, to increase staffing positions, one teaching assistant and one point-two speech for a total of $28,000.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Yes.
So in the past, I mean, and I know we're only a week away, but there was a, obviously the immediate need to kind of do that, and it was more cost-effective for us to start that immediately as opposed to paying a sub-rate. And so I'm just wondering, and I'm not thinking, obviously, if we're looking at, you know, $16,000 for the year, that it's that much money, but.
Yes, so in.
Every penny counts.
Yeah, every penny does count.
I think two years ago, we ended with about $60. So, right?
Yeah, if not less.
So in, in, in the case of the additional hire, we, we actually need to post the position and fill it, so there's nothing we could, we couldn't get it done any quicker than next week. And in terms of the speech person, that's just an addition, and we already have the person. So in this specific case, there is no impact, or I would say so.
Okay. An additional week of a hire than.
Yeah, we, we're, we're working, but.
Yeah. In the past, we've suspended our rules to, to vote on that for the impact.
And we're lucky that we have a, a meeting next week, so.
And setting aside funds for that period of time when we might not have a permanent person in there.
In our ISS budgets, we've set aside $12,000 for the year for temporary teaching assistance.
Okay. Fair enough. And thank you for going into detail on the need during the budget review. It's very helpful.
So we'll bring that forward next week.
Great. Look forward. Okay, and I don't see any other new business. I don't see any public. So therefore, I'd like to just turn to committee comment, if any. Ms. Lippert?
I'm good.
Ms. Treacy?
I'm good.
You're good. I just have one quick one. As you may know, the 3rd of October is the marching band competition in town. It starts about 4:00 PM, and you will be pleasured with, I think, 13 bands this year. The North Andover Music Association is collecting donations for the concessions. They can be dropped off at the high school on the 24th or the 28th. And if you haven't attended the marching band competition, it is really a great evening of, of excitement, pageantry, and, and awards. So.
What is the date?
This is October 3rd. The, I think the gates open at the 3:30 or 4:00 PM. And any other information can be found at thenorthandovermusic.org website.
And I think that the North Andover band goes on at 6:50, is what I have been told.
That's about, yeah. So, look forward to that. That's all I have?
I just have a quick question. Are we, we don't have a school committee, a school district table or booth at the Fall Festival, do we? On Saturday?
Not at all.
Not like National Night Out? No? Okay.
No, I think National Night Out is our, that's probably our biggest crowd of the year to visit. Okay.
Okay.
Nothing else? Take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.